Buenos dias, Hafede. The Committee on Infrastructure Economic Development, Simon Sanchez High School, Disability Service, Self-Determination, Star Preservation, Housing, Public County and the Guam Bureau will conduct this hearing. It is currently 2:12 PM, Thursday, October 31st, 2024. Happy Halloween, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for being here. For those of you who are with us today in person and watching virtually, we appreciate your time for being here this afternoon. Notice of this hearing was provided to all senators, stakeholders, and local media in October 24th and October 29th, 2024, thus meeting the requirements for open government law. In addition, notice of this hearing was also posted on the Guam Legislature's website and the Guam Public Notice Portal. Materials for this hearing were shared on the committee drive and are available for print upon request. Recording of today's hearing will also be available on the Guam Legislature's website and YouTube page. For signing convenience, please scan the QR code displayed at the entrance. At this time, I would like to recognize Senator Frank Blas to my right, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes to my immediate left, and then Senator Telo Taidwi to my further left side. I'd like to provide some general ground rules on conduct for deals in attendance. The conduct of this hearing should be as follows. Individual speaking shall only use respectful language and professional language of conduct. Personal interference about the character or motive of any senator or any individual is not permitted. The chairperson of the committee may order the removal from a hearing, or committee, or subcommittee of any person who is not a member of Liangguan and who fails to observe property decorum according to the 37 Guam legislative standing rules. All must abide by these rules of conduct for quality assurance standards. At this time, we ask you to place all mobile devices on silent mode. People speaking, and before speaking, please introduce yourself, state your name, job title, organization, or self for the record purpose. Thank you for understanding and your cooperation. The discussion of today's public hearing is to hear the discussions and appointment of Shin Saku Tyra to serve as a member of Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors for a term of four years from the date of confirmation. And Bill Number 364-37, core introduced by Senator Frank Blas, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Telo Taidwi, and Act to amend Section 1908 of Chapter 19, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated Relative to the Duties of the Public Auditor with regard to audit on nonprofits and non-governmental organizations that receive funding from any department or agency of the government of Guam. Let's begin with discussions with the first thing on the agenda. We'll start with Mr. Shin Saku. If you could please proceed to the table, and then we will have Katrina Rages, if you could please step forward. Mel Mendiola, if you would please step forward. Ryan Mummer, Mummer? Mummer? Okay. Everyone else is just in observing capacity. Thank you so much. Mr. Tyra, would you like to proceed first, or would you want me to circle back to you after everyone's testimony?
Uh, I would...
Okay. You may proceed. Again, just turn on your mic and then state your name and proceed for a minute.
Hafede.
Okay.
Buenos dias, Hafede, honorable members of the Guam Legislature, Chairperson Canata, Senator Frank Blas, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Telo Taidwi, and other distinguished guests. My name is Shin Tyra, and it is with sincere enthusiasm and a deep sense of responsibility that I provide testimony before you today as an appointee to serve as a member of the Board of Directors for Guam Economic Development Authority. Atori dat in adelantan ekonomiha in Guam. With a career spanning over two decades in operation management, strategic development, and financial oversight, I am fully committed to advancing GIDA's mission of developing a sound and sustainable economy for Guam. The Guam Economic Development Authority plays a pivotal role in shaping our island's future, and my career trajectory aligns with GIDA's strategic focus areas. As Chief Operating Officer at Calvo Enterprises Inc. and as the Director of Technology and Process at Title Guarantee of Guam, I have led significant initiatives that drive technological innovation, optimize operational efficiencies, and enhance organizational effectiveness. My past experience in managing diverse teams and large-scale projects in retail management, finance, title research, and property management equips me with the skills necessary to contribute effectively to GIDA's ongoing and future efforts. Notably, as General Manager at Sorenson Media Group, I navigated the company through challenging economic climates, overhauling legacy systems and processes to stabilize operations, and maintaining continuity during COVID-19 pandemic for our frontline workers. This role underscored the importance of agility and strategic foresight in economic management, qualities that I believe would be imperative for the role at GIDA, especially during times of crisis. GIDA was certainly instrumental during COVID and Typhoon Marwar in administering programs to our affected community. If I am appointed, this would be my first opportunity to serve the people of Guam within government. However, throughout my career, I have demonstrated a commitment to fostering economic growth and community development. My involvement in civic engagements, such as founding the House of Chamoros to foster and perpetuate the culture of Guam and the Marianas in San Diego, and my advisory role with Junior Achievement Guam highlight my dedication to community service and cultural promotion. In the past, some had wondered what qualified a batzago like me to be involved with these matters and causes. I have always considered Guam my home, and I had immigrated to Guam when I was six years old from Okinawa, Japan, which is not unlike Guam, as a land of bananas, beaches, and bases. In the late 70s, after I was born, my mother Nancy Yasuko Tyra had moved to Guam seeking opportunities within the American dream and had met Seuss Ferenthalahi Familian Andu from PD. Our family had a homestead lease from the Department of Agriculture to a farm of 40 acres on Swamp Road up in Ukuru in the 80s and 90s. As his reared son, I accompanied Jesse, or Tu as he was known, to many meetings as he was heavily involved with the Guam Farmers Co-op, as well as serving as a Chair of the Northern Soil and Water Conservation District, serving with Tun Ramon San Agustin of Dedodo and Tun Felix Piquan of Machanau. Like his close friends and fellow farmers, I looked to Tun Jess Terlahi as my example of a tireless servant dedicated to his community, one whose members worked directly with the land and were true stewards of our environment. On the other hand, my mother Nancy, without any prior experience in automotive retail nor a very strong command of English, worked with my stepfather Jesse to acquire and operate Guam Chief Auto Parts and Harmon Industrial Park with savings from our farming. I was in middle school at the time, and I recall that my mother was not civically engaged at all. However, I watched and only later came to appreciate her ability to adapt from farming to being a small business owner while my stepfather continued to farm. I believe my willingness to adapt and undergo complete changes into new industries with steep learning curves were learned through my parental upbringing. Together with my wife Christina, we hope to pass these generational lessons on to our 14-year-old daughter Megumi. Inevitably, I followed these footsteps, and prior to my return to Guam, I pursued a venture as a small business operator in the compliance and regulation-heavy state of California. My business partner was a half-Pakistani, half-British expat that I had met in college when I was a student studying in Japan. I have firsthand experience with my business partner filing and investing under the E2 Visa program and operating a food and beverage establishment in San Diego, which we affectionately named T.O. Chino. For those that may not be familiar with Spanish, that roughly translates to Uncle Batzago. The E2 Visa, similar to the EB5 and L1 Visa categories, are programs allowing applicants to be admitted and immigrate to the United States when investing capital in a business. My experiences align with GIDA's administration of foreign assistance investment programs, which include promotion of the EB5 Investor Visa Program. These experiences have equipped me with a unique perspective on the interplay between cultural heritage and economic development. I appreciate and strongly value the small business entrepreneurial mindset that was necessary for Nancy to thrive in industrial Harmon. I venerate the tenacity of red dirt agricultural farming, and when Jesse's source of income was wiped out for several months when humbled by nature, we were the beneficiaries of government support during, after typhoons. In summation, my firsthand experience with small business resilience and agricultural challenges directly informs my approach to the role of government with economic development and disaster recovery. As a prospective member of the GIDA Board, I am eager to engage deeply with initiatives in aquaculture, agriculture, additive manufacturing, and transshipment. My background in strategic planning and finance equips me to provide valuable insight and guidance in these areas, helping to strengthen Guam's regional and global economic position. I am committed to innovation, ethical governance, and proactive leadership to ensure that GIDA not only meets but exceeds its economic development goals. I look forward to the opportunity to be my background, experience, and expertise to the Board and to collaborate with all stakeholders to drive meaningful growth and prosperity for our island. I would also like to say say no maasi and extend my heartfelt thanks to the Ufisina in Magahogan, Guam, and the Governor Lou Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Teno Norio for appointing me to this position pending legislative approval. And I thank all of the members of this body and the committee for considering my appointment. Sezus Maasi.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'll recognize Christina or Katrina. My apologies.
Hafede, good afternoon. Honorable Roy Canata, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, I'm sorry, and committee members. I am here to represent Angelita Polino Mendiola. I am her goddaughter, and I'm here to represent her and read her written testimony in support of the appointment of Shin Saku Tyra as member of the Board of Directors for the Guam Economic Development Authority. Her letter reads, "Hafede, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Angelita Polino Mendiola, and I submit this testimony in full support of Mr. Shin Saku Tyra, also known as Shin, in his appointment to the GIDA Board. I have known Mr. Tyra for over 30 years since he was a young boy. Mr. Tyra was raised by his mother Nancy Tyra and the late Jesus Terlahi, a Korean War veteran and longtime local farmer. I felt it was important for me to submit this testimony because I also wanted to call attention to the fact that Shin was raised on one of the major local 20-acre farms on Swamp Road that provided fresh vegetables and fruits to our local schools. Since he was four years old, Shin spent his days learning to till the soil, plant the many different seeds, tend the fields, harvest the crops, wash the produce in barrels, and with his stepfather sell the tons of produce to GDOE and at the Old Farmers Coa when it was located in Hagatna. When he was not working on the farm, he was helping his mother, who owned Guam Chief Auto in the 90s, selling auto parts in Harmon Industrial Park. All this hard work allowed for his mom and stepfather to send Shin to St. John's School. After graduating high school, Shin went on to get his college and more advanced education in California and Japan. He even spent some time working for a big investment bank. Shin is a Guam boy raised on the farm and the industrial park and is our own local boy who went from Swamp Road to Wall Street. He has all kinds of leadership experience from the very small business to the very big business, and he decided to come back home to make a life and to do what he can to improve Guam. Having these kinds of very hardworking, strong-rooted, and educated kids return home has been the hope for our community for a very long time and always will be. I am very excited and I am very encouraged that this generation of kids are coming back and stepping up to help our community and their island home. Shin is a good boy, and I support his nomination wholeheartedly. Shin was raised as a farmer, which assures me that he was raised properly and really knows the value of our land and all the good it can bring to our lives if we plan properly, work hard, and always help each other to do great things. I strongly encourage the committee and the rest of the senators to also support Shin Tyra and all these types of good and educated Guam kids who want to step up and do whatever they can to improve our island, their home. It's time. Sezus Maasi, see Angelita Polino Mendiola, tau tau ina lahan, Zen Retired GDOE Administrator and Farmer. Thank you."
Thank you so much for representing your Nina. It's very much a beautiful woman.
It's my pleasure.
Yes. Thank you so much. At this time, we will recognize Mr. Mummer. You may proceed. Just again now.
Hafede, Senator Canessa, Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, Senators Blas, Brown, and Taidwi. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to give this testimony to the committee. My name is Ryan Mummer, and I am the General Manager of Title Guarantee of Guam, and I'm writing to offer my support and endorsement of Shin Tyra's candidacy for the GIDA Board of Directors. My personal experience with Shin is far greater than my professional one. Having personally known him for over 30 years, I can tell you, he has always shown up for me and others in life. Although he is not Catholic, he probably knows the rosary and funeral rites better than you, for all those he has shown up for in moments of loss. Although he is not Chamorro, he likely embodies the local culture and spirit more than many who are, through shared time at family gatherings, barbecues, and celebration of life's milestones, because he understands the value of being present. If you want to talk about his local experience, we can talk about how he grew up on a farm just off NCS, where he learned his blue-collar work ethic, or how he spent his days after school studying behind the counter of his immigrant mother's auto parts business, learning entrepreneurship and hustle, and how, always keeping Guam in his heart, he found ways to stay connected and serve its people and culture, whether through his efforts to found the House of Chamoros while living in San Diego, or through his award-winning mentorship with Junior Achievement of Guam. Shin's career path is marked by versatility of experience. He has worked as an equity analyst for the automotive sector at Lehman Brothers in Japan, gaining insights into our regional financial markets and developing an acumen for strategic investment. He has owned his own business in the service industry, so he understands the challenges an entrepreneur faces. And having managed businesses of varying size across diverse industries, including real estate, retail, and service-based enterprises, Shin has learned to manage and lead organizations of different sizes and complexity, and how to deal with a wide range of issues and challenges that arise during business cycles. Through these experiences, Shin has developed a deep understanding of the complexities and challenges that businesses in Guam face, as well as a perceptive eyes, a perceptive eye for opportunities that arise as a result. Even though I have known Shin for many years, I've only worked with him professionally since 2020. In my professional experience, I have discovered his innate ability to observe and understand subtleties that others miss, often astutely intuiting underlying issues. He is skilled and well-versed in organizational systems, policies, and theories, and has helped us develop, implement, and navigate our internal systems and process changes. He can quickly analyze and understand large tranches of information and communicate them simply for the layman and with nuanced complexity to those well-versed in the subject. He asks excellent questions and is extremely pragmatic, but has enough vision to allow for the opportunities of idealism. He's a thinker and a lifelong learner who carefully studies his environment and considers all perspectives before making decisions. This observant, insightful nature would be an asset to the Board, ensuring that critical nuances in policy, economic challenges, and community needs are recognized and addressed thoughtfully. Most importantly, I know Shin will be diligent with his stewardship of GIDA as a board member. He will show up and do the work for the people of Guam, as he has shown up consistently to all those who have worked with him professionally and for all those he knows and cares about personally. Shin's lifetime of experience, combined with his dedication in Guam and the lessons he's carried from his upbringing, uniquely qualify him to serve on the GIDA Board of Directors. He embodies the spirit of determination, grit, and vision that I believe our island's economic future needs. He has my support. I urge him to give him yours. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'll recognize Senator Joanne Brown for joining us this afternoon. Mel, you may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Hafede, Chairman Canata, and members of the committee, my name is Melanie Mendiola, and I'm the Administrator/CEO of the Guam Economic Development Authority. And on behalf of the senior leadership team at GIDA, I am here to express our enthusiastic support for Shin Saku Tyra to serve as a Director of the Board, on the Board. I've been acquainted with the nominee for a little over 10 years, as we have many mutual friends. We are around the same age and both lived in New York at the same time. I didn't go from Swamp Road to Wall Street. I went from Pogget to Wall Street, though. Little different, not that different. But we didn't cross paths in New York. Later on, he ran a small business, a Chamorro Fusion restaurant in San Diego, and I was working at Farm to Table Guam with our local farmers, and we communicated over ways in which restaurants supported farmers, and he had a lot of insight on that, and we appreciated his insight. We finally met in real life in 2018 or so through the Guam Young Professionals, a subcommittee of the Guam Chamber of Commerce. He had returned home by then. And since then, I've observed the nominee in private sector, in the private sector in many challenging roles, including the General Manager of Sorenson Media Group, and most recently, the Chief Operating Officer at Calvo's Enterprises. One of the greatest challenges in all my roles, from volunteering with the Guam Young Professionals to here at GIDA, is the engagement of young professionals. Shin and I are around the same age, and I still think we are considered young, not as young as Chairman. Nevertheless, I think that in the area of public service, he's a great representation of how our Boards should look throughout our government agencies. He's the son of Guam. He's a son of Guam. He's educated. He lived locally and abroad, and ultimately, he came back here to stay and has the time and the resources and is willing to give back. On Monday, I'll be meeting with trade representatives in Japan to build on our small business export program, our STEP program with the SBA. We hosted an inbound trade mission over the summer, and some of our local businesses are already realizing increased customer channels between Guam and Japan. If Shin was on board, we would take him with us because I heard that he's fluent in business Japanese. He can still come. He just has to, you know, pay his own way. At GIDA, we are considered a small agency. We have under 50 employees, and the role of the Board is to steer the agency strategically, to supervise management, and ultimately, carry out the mission of the organization to build a sound and sustainable economy that makes the lives of the people of Guam better. And as we continue to serve the people of Guam, it is imperative that we have knowledge, expertise, and compassion at the helm of the agency. We have that with our existing Board members, and I think that this nominee will continue to add to the strength of our Board. I urge the committee to hastily confirm Shin Saku Tyra as a Board Member at the Guam Economic Development Authority, and I'll be here for questions as well. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'll recognize Vice Speaker to read a testimony to the record. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to read a testimony coming from one of the Public Policy Institute students, Mr. Mark Wang, who was part of our program but also is a sophomore in college. He says, "My name is Mark Wang, and I'm a sophomore in college, writing my full support for the nomination of Mr. Shin Tyra to be a Director on the GIDA Board. I have known Mr. Shin for over four years now. I first met him while I was a sophomore in high school, participating in the Junior Achievement JA Company Program. He was our advisor since Title Guarantee was sponsoring our team. Hence, I've been able to work very closely with him over the years. I'm sure that the committee will be well-informed on Mr. Shin's background and the qualification he has for this post, which is why I'd like to highlight some qualities that might not be as clearly reflected on paper. I've seen firsthand the selfless dedication that Mr. Shin has for the youth of Guam. Being a JA advisor is a purely voluntary position. However, Mr. Shin was always there for us, going above and beyond what was expected of him. For example, during my sophomore year, our team was very behind schedule in rolling out the products we were trying to sell. The only space available to us to use was a vacant floor in the Title Guarantee building. That was the workshop that we worked out to put finishing touches and packages on our product. And since we were very behind schedule, that meant multiple nights staying up till 10:00 PM at the workshop on a school day. Most nights, I'd be the last one to leave with Mr. Shin. He would stay behind after 5:00 PM to keep the building open for us while we worked. We insisted that we'll try again to find another place to work out of, and we didn't need to kept him back for so long, but Mr. Shin was very clear to us that it was not a problem. So we reluctantly agreed and were able to push our products out. I speak for everyone on our team when I say that without Mr. Shin, we would not have been able to experience the learning and growth that we had while participating in JA. He was always approachable while instilling the values of accountability on us. I'd say he's the perfect balance between a mentor and friend. We were truly lucky to have someone who set such a high bar for the expectations of a JA Junior Achievement Advisor. I'm not a part of the JA Program anymore, but I still regularly keep in touch with Mr. Shin. His relationship to me as a mentor has continued beyond the JA Program. Even now in college, I still regularly turn to him for advice on careers, life, and dealing with homesickness. Mr. Shin has a way of turning any achievement or setback into a life lesson. He has a way of understanding current events and situations from an entirely new perspective. I am stoked to provide this testimony in support of Mr. Shin's nomination. I don't think I've been able to fully capture the positive impact he has made on my life. There is a lot of this testimony would easily be multiple pages, but I hope to leave the committee with this. Mr. Shin is a leader who is invested in the future of Guam, starting with the island's youth. I am confident that Mr. Shin's experience working in various industries on Guam and in the States, coupled with a selfless belief in giving back, will be a valuable addition to the GIDA Board. Sincerely, Mark." Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. At this time, I will recognize Vice Speaker, if you want to question any...
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do also want to say that Mr. Bor is here with us, and I was going to read it for him, but you're more than welcome to read it. I can read it for you. He had asked. So it says, "To whom it may concern, Shin Saku Tyra would be an asset to Guam's Economic Development Authority for many of his qualities," to name a few. This would have to include his ethics of hard work, innovation, thought process, and integrity to his culture. By default, owning your own company takes a lot of hard work, and this chapter of his life, he also promoted his culture through food as a restaurateur. He also participated in one of the largest festivals in the United States, known as the Pacific Island Festival Association, which caters to 250,000 people in one weekend. This is no easy task to participate in, in such a high-profile event. Working and knowing Shin Saku for more than 20 years, his innovation to problem solve and provide... his innovation to problem-solve and provide solutions during critical times is second to none. He remains calm and provides sound solutions to his team. He always remains professional and humble to his teammates. His ethics of hard work, experience, and integrity of our culture will assist in GITA's mission to develop a sound and sustainable economy through innovative programs that preserves and promotes local culture, economic opportunities, and quality of life. He would do great as a member of the Board for GITA and do not hesitate to contact me for any questions. Thank you and have a great day. Regards, Josh Borham." He is the Board of Directors for the Guma Liberation at Gmail dot, with Gmail dot com. And he has an off-island number. He is here on Guam. And he said he has come home to his roots. And when he found out that Mr. Shin was here, that he wanted to make sure that he showed his support. He said he's shy, but if you asked him any questions, that he was willing to come back. And I know I'm forcing that also on him. But thank you, Mr. Bora, for being here and thank you for giving me the honor to read this testimony on your behalf. Senator Ozzy, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, at this time, I'll recognize Senator Telo Tideway. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to my colleagues and most especially, good afternoon to those who are here today testifying. And it sounds like it's all in favor of you, Mr. Tyra. First, congratulations on your appointment. GITA is a very important agency, very important agency. It drives our economy. So you're in a position right now to assist. And looking at your background, it's obvious you have a lot of experience. And sometimes, that means a lot more than having some diploma from other places. But the experience you have is, oh, spot on in every avenue. And also, your commitment to the Chamorof culture. I'm very happy to see that you were one of the founders of Houses Chamorof in San Diego. I had the opportunity to go there and visit when we had a, there was a festival. And I was honored that I was able to provide the House of Chamorof with a replica of an ancient Chamorof tool. I gave it to Jeff MacRae. Yeah, Jeff, so he has my tool, but it's only on loan for a couple of years, okay? So I want my tool back, okay?
You have to borrow it back, Senator.
So that being said, I mean, it sounds like you're covered on the business side, on the cultural side. So now, the question is, oh, and by the way, I think we're going to need to have to, we're going to need to change this application. Kind of concerned me because I saw Mel walking in and she seemed like nothing was wrong because according to this, the position in which you're appointed is made is Director of GITA. We're going to have to change that, okay? The application says Director, so Mel, you're not going anywhere, are you?
I'm not, I'm an administrator, ma'am.
Okay, so it's, okay, I just wanted to make sure. It doesn't mean Director, okay?
Yes, I'm the administrator, I'm the administrator and CEO. He's a Director of the Board.
Usually, they say Board, Board of Directors, so sometimes, you know.
Member of the Board, perhaps?
And unfortunately, it didn't say that, but I was kind of concerned. But you're right, right, it's administrator, not director. So that's good, that's covered. It helped, though, to put Member of the Board. The question I have is, you know, I've always, when I look at people wanting to serve, of course, first question is the ability to be there during the meetings, there every month? Is that correct? Can you tell me what the requirement is, Mr. Tyra?
Yes, my understanding is that there would be a monthly board meeting, which I would attend.
And you have no problem meeting that prerequisite?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's good. You know, I like to look at websites, especially from agencies. And it's important to be transparent. It's one of my major concerns about the government of Guam, the lack of transparency and accountability. Are you familiar with the last board meeting that they had at GITA? Have you had an opportunity to read some of the board minutes?
For the last board meeting, I have not. Although, in the past, whether, you know, I may have been watching the legislative channel and had caught something related to something that GITA was doing. But I am not aware of the last meeting.
Well, I'm asking you, since you're coming on board, you know, maybe keep that, you know, something close to you to monitor. Because right now, on the website for GITA, the only thing that's up there is May 30, 2024. And that's the only board minutes that is up there. That's the last one. So we're missing, you know, June, July, August. So, you know, it's important to be transparent and let everyone know that there's nothing to hide, you know? So I ask that you, I always tell board members to do that. Keep us updated. Another thing is, another thing to look out for, or, well, we have the public auditor here. And I'm one that likes to look at his comments that he makes. And whenever you want to find how an agency is working, just read one of the audit reports. So there's an audit report that was put out for 2023 that was put in. And it talks about unfunded mandates. It also talks about, you know, some rental properties that you have, programs, actually. So these areas, I'm sure you can provide some insight as a businessman, you know, opening your own business. Other than these programs, my question now to you is, well, first, please make sure you read all the audits that come out, which I'm sure you will. And it might be very helpful to read the last two audits, you know, that will keep you up to speed. So when you're at GITA, other than, I know you have the, some ideas that you want to do to improve GITA or to provide new insight, what is something that you're looking forward to at GITA to provide, you know, greater assistance to the program and to the people of Guam, especially businesses?
Okay, thank you for the question, Senator. I haven't been able to do the due diligence. Actually, this acceptance of, or discussions about serving on the Board through the application process through today was rather quick. And so, you know, as I stated in my testimony, I think that initially, when I joined the Board and I get a chance to meet all the stakeholders and all the members of GITA, you know, again, it's going to be a pretty steep learning curve, I believe. And as you suggested, I would read through minutes, have one-on-one discussions and discussions with all members of GITA, and review the OPA reports to try to understand the current situation there and obviously, try to read into a lot of the histrionics, right? And then I would, again, listen and serve as a member of the Board in trying to ask questions and steer the agency.
Is there anything that you would like to, like, dabble in while you're in GITA? To something new or innovative, something like AI or even cybersecurity or anything like that? What's the future is leading to in that direction when it comes to, you know, the economy or building of businesses, anything like that?
Well, I've always believed that in order to have diversified economy here with regards to manufacturing, farming, a lot of it's going to hinder on the transshipment and the cost of getting goods into Guam and off of Guam.
Oh, speak into the mic.
Getting products, materials into Guam and then exported out of Guam, that's always a challenge. I think giving costs affects everything from the cost of building homes to all the things that you see on the shelves. And I think, you know, long-term, 10, 20 years from now, I think regionally, Indonesia, India, those are going to be the large economies, right? They're going to be the top five economies of the world. And so I think Guam has an opportunity to kind of maybe look forward to that. And again, that's very long-term. But again, I would have to kind of become more familiar with all of the programs and all the details. But again, I think that's kind of where I would focus my attention, right?
And, you know, to put the cherry on the top, that, you know, dessert, please include sustainability, you know? Moving forward and innovation is important. But sustainability is something that Guam needs to, I mean, that could address some of the issues on transshipment and being able to, you know, Guam to be able to survive on its own in some way. I know it's, you know, it's a wish list, but I think we need to move in that direction. So I know I've given you a lot of things to think about. The last thing I'd like to share is that my office is always open if you ever want any, need anything or have any questions or, you know, just to find out some other information as you're looking through what you're getting yourself into. So it's obvious that you have the background that's needed for this. And I greatly appreciate you stepping forward to give something back to the island. I mean, you've done it many times. This is going to be something very big. I think you're going to be very proud if you were able to provide additional assistance to GITA. So I appreciate it again, and thank your family for allowing you to take this position.
I appreciate that, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll recognize Minority Leader Frank Boss.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Shin, I was having a beer with you the other night.
Oh.
You know, when I saw the package and everything, I looked and I had to look up and I said, yes. I think probably, my experience with you was many years ago. If there's, Mel, if he can, if he can help to direct and administer the way he cooks, okay, we've got a gem, okay? I remember going, I remember sat next to him the other night and I said, Shin, I said, "I know you. I went to your restaurant in San Diego, okay? And had a very good conversation. And I think just within the conversation, your enthusiasm, not knowing that this was occurring today, that you had been basically tasked or asked to be a member of the Board. I was pretty impressed. And looking at your, looking at your resume, looking at your experiences and talking to you that night, you know, of your experiences, albeit it was very short, but it gave me some great insight and I appreciate that. And I'm elated, I'm glad. I'm glad that, you know, the administration has found you, that you have accepted and you are willing to be able to do this. Your life experiences as well, not just in a farm, but, you know, in the kitchen as well as, you know, the boardrooms of other places. And now, you know, as the Chief Operating Officer of a large enterprise, I think you're going to bring some experience and some knowledge to this. So I've got no problem with your nomination, my buddy, okay? So I just want to say thank you. Thank you very much for stepping up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This is a smart Senator. Thank you.
At this time, I'll recognize Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Certainly, good afternoon. You've had quite a story to tell that certainly brings a whole variety of experience that you will have in serving on the GITA Board. What do you think is the greatest need? I mean, GITA's, you know, been known for providing assistance, financial and otherwise, and always trying to encourage additional business investment on Guam. But what do you think you can add? What new direction do you think GITA should go to expand or improve our economic welfare here on Guam? Especially after COVID and certainly the impact to a lot of, particularly, small businesses and some large businesses on Guam that have either cut their operations or closed shop and simply will not open again. So I want to get your insight from your own experience. What would you, what would you see that you could contribute to the Board?
I believe that by role would be one where, I always kind of tell this story, that back in 2003, 2004, there was some people that kind of decided to create a website, you know, on what was a new thing at the time, the internet. And, you know, it was some guy that put up a page called People from Guam, PFG as it was known. And I remember I had, I was, I'd moved back to, or I'd moved to California at the time. And I was there for a couple of years. And everyone that was, you know, local that I had met out there was, you could connect through this website called People from Guam. But at the very exact same time, there was another person somewhere in Boston thinking of the same thing in his dorm room. And that was Mark Zupergurig on Facebook. So the idea is exactly the same, right? But the execution was obviously different. I think now, if you try to go there, it's a 404 service error. And so, but, you know, at one time, I think I was reading that it had something like, you know, 2 million page requests a month, right? 30,000 users. This is back in 2003, 2004. So I guess my point there is that Guam and the Marianas, there's no shortage of ideas. And I don't, I'm not trying to, I don't think that coming in as a nominee or appointee and being a new member of a Board, I'm not going to proffer all these great ideas because I think my strength is kind of asking questions and trying to give feedback on the efficacy, the, how pragmatically can GITA administer these programs. And so on the operational side, I think that's where I would kind of delve my, kind of, I guess, review and learning to just understand how the organization works, its exact role, the people that run the organization. Again, I think that people are the most valuable asset for any organization, right? For anybody, for any company. And so, once I am able to have a very good understanding of that, I think I would be able to better answer your question at that point. But as of right now, I don't know that I have any, you know, magic idea that may or may not help Guam get out of its situation with depressed tourism numbers and, you know, reliance on the buildup. But, yeah, hopefully, I can provide more insight to you in the next few months or coming year.
Well, I certainly appreciate your honesty with regards to that. And I look forward to the work that you will do. I mean, you have a dynamic group to work with and hopefully, that creates an even better energy because we certainly do need it. I mean, Guam's come a long way, but in many ways, we still think there's a lot more that still needs to be done to get our community, get our economy and our island to a level that we would like to see, that we know is possible. So I certainly appreciate your efforts and willing to step forth and also appreciate you telling us about your story, what brought you to where you are today because those are valuable qualities that not everybody has, not a lot of young people have growing up today, having those experiences. And that helps build your character, that helps build your focus and your mindset and your priorities. So thank you so much for being here this afternoon. We wish you well. I'm sure the odds of you getting confirmed are fairly good.
I appreciate that, Senator. Thank you.
I'm sure you're up to the task. We look forward to hearing some good things from you in the months and the years ahead. Thank you so much for your participation in this process. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, I'll recognize Senator, I mean, Vice Speaker Tina Rosemon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say for the record, Mr. Chair, that I'm in full support of Mr. Shin's nomination to the GITA Board. And, you know, Josh had literally put it, hit the nail on the head when he said that his innovation to problem-solve and provide solutions during critical times is second to none. I've known Mr. Shin for, since 2019, when I was the Speaker of the 35th Guam Legislature and working close with a lot of our Chamorofs in California and around the United States in literally wanting to build the House of Chamorofs. And when things got tough and it was really difficult, they never gave up. And they took the time to communicate with us and to work with us and as Oversight Chair, and working closely with the Tourism Committee, we were able to assist in the work that all of them, the committee back there, did to make this House of Chamorof successful for thousands and thousands, hundreds of thousands of people who come on a yearly basis. There is a representation of who we are as island people, not just Guam, but Guam and the Marianas. And that collaboration and having Mr. Bora here, who just came back and shared his perspective, you know? And I must say, Mr. Chair, even at that, you know, Mr. Bora said, who comes from Chamorof Hands and Education links unity. That's his acronym for CHETLU. And the CHETLU support that Shin and Josh and Jeff MacRae and all those... And the Chetlou support that Shin and Josh and Jeff Macrick and all those, the late Joey Sopeda, I know he's in having, watching over and saying, yes, give it to him. So I want to say, Mr. Chair, for the record, I hope you expedite his nomination package real soon so that we can hear it at the next session, because I think that he could add, added value to the Board of Directors of the Gita Board and, and say, I will give you my 100% support. So I'm Duncan Nocito Smasi, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to support this nominee. Senamasi.
You're welcome, Madam Vice Speaker. Certainly, if you have nothing further to provide the body, I will conclude your hearing. You definitely have my support. I wish you all the best. If there's anything you need from my office, my, my office is always available for you, okay?
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work. Gita team, carry on. You're dismissed for the day. My favorite OPA Director, thank you.
Thank you so much again, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us today. We will be proceeding with the bill number 364-37 introduced by Senator Frank Blas, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Telo Tadegui, and section 1908 of chapter 19, Title I Guam Code Annotated Relatives to the Duties of Public Auditor with the regard to audits on nonprofits and non-governmental organizations that receive funding from any department and agency of the government of Guam. I will now proceed to the author to open up. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to my colleagues for being here. Thank you to the public auditor, Speaker, the honor of BJ Cruz for being here as well. Mr. Chair, bill number 364-37, C.O.R., this is introduced by myself, Senators Joanne Brown and Telo Tadegui. What it basically, what it will provide is the ability for the public auditor to be able to conduct audits on non-governmental organizations or nonprofit organizations that receive funding from any department or agency of the government of Guam. And at first glance, you know, some people say, well, it should be done, it should be done already. And at first glance, it should be. However, in discussions with the public auditor and in review of the language contained, not just in the budget bill, in all budget bills that have provisions to provide nonprofit or MPOs or NGOs funding, and to look at the statutes, while it provides the ability to be able, to tell me to say that nonprofits and non-governmental organizations need to be able to prepare their books, and it could be examined for purposes of an audit, it was not specific or explicit enough to be able to say that it can be done. And so put this bill together in cooperation and in working with the Office of the Public Auditor for the language to be included for those organizations that have received at least $200,000, whether it be a one-time shot or cumulative, that they can be subject to an audit to be performed by the public auditor. So with that, Madam Chair, that was, that's the, the evidence for the bill. And I look forward to the discussions that we're going to be having in the hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minority Leader, Senator Frank Blas. At this time, I will allow the public auditor to speak on the measure. Public auditor, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, members of the committee, I'm Benjamin Cruz, Public Auditor. I'm here to testify in favor of bill 364-37. I want to thank the sponsors of the bill, Senators Frank Blas, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Telo Tadegui, for introducing this bill. Bill 364-37 makes it very clear, the Office of Public Accountability has the authority and the power to audit any non-governmental operation NGO or nonprofit organization MPO if said organization receives funding from any department or agency of the government of Guam. The sponsors in their legislative findings do acknowledge that, quote, "In almost every fiscal year budget enacted contained an appropriation for these, for these organizations," the verbiage reads, quote, "access by overseeing department or agency is duly authorized, representative and government authority appropriate, appropriate records for the purpose of audit and examination of books, documents and papers, and records of funds expended under the appropriation is included in the act." However, this does not explicitly empower the Office of Public Accountability with this responsibility. Bill 364 does exactly that and also sets the threshold amount of the organization must have received before the OPA has the authority to conduct the audit. Currently, the federal government requires single audits for organizations that receive over $750,000 a year in federal funds. Next year, that threshold go to 100, I mean, to 1 million. Bill 364 proposes to set the threshold for recipients of general fund monies at 200,000. The threshold is a determination to be made by this body. I just want to inform the committee that the, that the market is currently charging $12,000 to conduct an audit. As, as I read the bill, the OPA is not mandated to conduct an audit of every recipient of grants and the threshold, that meets the threshold, whether it states that we may conduct or cause to be conducted such audit or reviews. I assure you that I have no intention of auditing every NGO or MPO. I just want the explicit authority to conduct an audit if we believe that it is necessary. As I listened to the legislature earlier this month in the hearings for the supplemental budget, I was surprised to learn that there are NPOs and NGOs that have been receiving more money annually than some of, from the general fund than some of the smaller agency, governmental agencies. And they have, and they have not been subjected to audits up to now and how they expend their, their government funds. This bill aims to address this, and the OPA, therefore, is in full support of this, the passage. Thank you.
Thank you, OPA Director. At this time, I'll yield to the author of the bill, if he has any questions for you. Senator Frank Blas. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And truly, the only question I have for this bill 364-37, I wanted to share with you, Mr. Chair, that I really do agree with the intent that all public funds, regardless of whether it is spent by an agency or a nonprofit, that there needs to be accountability for all public funds. And that being said, I know that when the OPA audits an agency, usually the agency that pays for the audit, for the audit, right? So in this case, while we are authorizing the OPA to audit a nonprofit, my question is, who exactly will be paying for the audit? And if anything, do we need to pad monies going to the nonprofit to pay for audits? Or should I give the OPA a separate budgetary allotment to do this, to do what this bill intends? And, and with all due respect, I know that, you know, we've tried in the past to work with the, with the public auditor in reference to its funds, but I just wanted to make sure that that's, that's as explicit because you and your report also know that it, to do an audit today costs over, it used to be $10,000 or $8,000, $10,000, it's now $12,000. Who says next year's audit, how much those would be? So maybe if you can help me share that, who, who, where do you want me to get the resources to help pay for these audits that we do for other government agencies that must go through the audit?
I think it will be, I hadn't discussed this, hadn't even thought about this earlier, about how it was going to get paid. Currently, the government, the governmental agencies that do have audits of their financial statements, they pay for themselves. It's from their budget. And that's the reason why I included that statement in there where the threshold's 200,000. Not that I was suggesting that it go up, but I'm just saying, just be aware that some of that money is going to have to be spent in an audit. And so just think, just, just take that into consideration. The thing that I can suggest to, to the committee is, if you give the office the authority to conduct these audits, we could, because we've done it in the past, we've, we've conducted audits of the mayor's council, and the office has underwritten that expense because of the fact that we wanted it done, and there was great community interest in that. We didn't seek reimbursement, but we could ask for reimbursement. There could be a way that in the future, if, if, if we do too many of them, I mean, if we do many of them, then maybe we can come back and ask for a reimbursement from the legislature to, because we do have a, a small monument that we can pay for a few of the audits, but it's not something where I want to be conducting many. I mean, this fiscal year, because we did the, when we were doing the contract for the GovGuam White Audit, the budget the DOA had received for their GovGuam audit did not, or was not sufficient to underwrite the cost of the audit. So in order to get it moving, I offered and have had to transfer to, to, to DOA $80,000 to underwrite the cost, the difference that they didn't have when initiating the contract. In this year's budget, I believe DOA didn't ask for sufficient amount for, under the contract, because now there's an amount. And, and so I think, I believe they had sufficient amount because, but I, I just felt that I could, under the authority of conducting or have beacon, or to conduct, have it conducted, I was able to, I mean, I justified that payment to the system. I could, if I decided I'm going to do an audit of some NGO or MPO, front the cost and maybe ask for assistance later, but we can do it. It just, it just, when I was listening to the hearing, I didn't realize that some agencies, I mean, some NGOs and MPOs had received that much money. And they get more than, they were getting more than my appropriation. And I was surprised. And so anyway, but anyway, yeah, that's, I, we, I confronted for, if we decide that we're going to do it, and then we'll come back to you about the needs to, to make up for it. But I think, I think it's necessary to have it. And rather than to get it all tied up and trying to figure out how to get the money, we'll, we'll, we'll get it started and then we'll ask for reimbursement.
I think it's really important, Mr. Auditor, based on your, your, your statement and what was provided and the thresholds that we're looking, you already said that from the federal government's perspective, it was those that are getting audited are those making 700, or being awarded 750,000 or more, and this coming year to be over, maybe up to 1 million, anyone making over $1 million. I just want to make sure that the provisions and the resources are there for you, because you're the team that needs, your team needs to be the one to do the investigations, the audit findings and all that. And it is not easy. And when we look at, at those independent audits that are going out there and what is being allocated right now, I, I, I don't want the Office of Public Accountability to be stuck with that. And, and Mr. Chair, I, I hope that the author of the legislation helps support that efforts and the committee to make sure that there's a mechanism in there that if it, if it has to be done, then that there's a, whether it's a pot of money or up to, that we provide you for that, for that resource so that you, your office wouldn't be impeded for the other things that, that's the reason why you get your budget on an annual basis. So that was my only concern.
No, I, I think it's a good one, but I don't want that held up because you, we can't put any money aside for it right now. I think we can probably front some to be able to do it and then come back to you and talk to you about it. But I think some of them just need to be, some need to be looked at. But, but the cost is going up because all of us are competing against the autonomous agencies. I keep telling you guys, we're going to have to get some way of, of getting, having them understand that they're, just because of their autonomous, they shouldn't be autonomous. And, you know, continue to go up. We were doing a RFP for one of the agencies, and the agency was aghast at how much the, 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 the next year's fees are going to be with, with the auditor. And I said to the, to the agency, you forget, GovGuam got a 22% across the board. The legislature was good enough to give us our leading edge study. And so some of my people got up to almost 30% increase. I said, EY is going to household, have to increase their pay. And so now all the agencies are, are having problems. I just had one audit entrance conference this morning with GSWA. They only have one auditor, I mean, one accountant, because they've lost everybody to the autonomous agencies. And hopefully, we're going to release DOA, I mean, DOEs, but DOE really needs people, but they can't, they can't compete. And it really is, we've got to figure out some way of equalizing the pay so that it's, we're not all running off to. But then again, it's not just the autonomous agencies, unfortunately. It's the federal government is also stealing a lot of our best employees.
Thank you, Mr. Auditor. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to inquire. I yield back.
Of course. Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. At this time, I'll recognize Senator Telo Tadegui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Half a day, public auditor. Thank you so much for all the hard work that you do, especially your staff, you know, and providing us the means to determine whether an agency is spending money wisely or not, or if there's any shenanigans going on. So I greatly appreciate your reports that you provide. Regarding this legislation, I signed on as a co-sponsor because I truly believe that if we're giving funding out because I truly believe that if we're giving funding out to any nonprofit organization, that they should definitely be accountable for it. And for instance, Guam Business Bureau, when they're giving out funding or grant to nonprofit organizations, whether it's a baseball team or whether it's a dance group or anything, before they do that, they have to meet the criteria of providing a reporting requirement. And, and sometimes we're finding out that that's not the case. GBB has been giving out these grants regardless if they've submitted their reports that are basically a requirement of having an NGO. So I do know that in this legislation, you mentioned that it's not a mandate that, as you spoke of earlier. But nonprofit organizations, do you know if they are required to post in the paper their financials every quarter or yearly? Maybe it's yearly. And if that's the case, can they provide you, if you see something array? Or maybe, maybe there can be an amendment in this legislation that, because, you know, with technology, sometimes it's going to get to a point where you don't know where to find anything. Because now PDN is no longer, you know, in, in print. They're online. The Post is still online, but there might be some other technology that comes up and makes it easier and everything online. But trying to find it is hard. So my question is, do you think we can make an amendment in here that, because we know the cost of doing an audit is, is costly, that you can require these nonprofit organizations to provide the OPA with their reports every year? Or if it's yearly or every six months? And that way, you can kind of look at these reports to determine if you see something that doesn't look right, that you can actually, then you can determine whether or not it. But can we make an amendment in this to require that all nonprofits provide you that reporting requirement?
Oh, we, we could. I, I'm not going to, but, and I'll do something that I probably shouldn't. But we're about to release a performance audit. Because during COVID, I wanted to find out whether or not our nonprofits and our NGOs that were receiving government funds, I mean, there were a number of them that received COVID funds. And I didn't want to be in the same situation that they had up in Siamia where people were incorporating what, the day before they got their, their grant or the day after. And I wanted to see, well, anyway, it's taken so long to get the information out of, out of revenue tax that the report's not going to be released until next month. But anyway, there are, there was in 19, in 2023, 1,500 NPOs and NGOs registered at, at revenue tax. Of those 1,500, when we started our audit and revenue tax decided it had better check to see whether or not everybody was complying. Because there is a compliance, there is a requirement that NGOs and NPOs have to file annually a financial statement, a report to revenue and taxation, and to publish their financial statement in the paper. When revenue tax did a review of, of, of the 1,500 that they had before them in 2023, they had to revoke the NPO or NGO designation of over, about 900 because they had not been making their correct, the regular filings. And, and about 590 of them are still active. And the other 900 are trying to either correct their, what they had failed to provide. But it's, and then something I completely forgot, this legislature repealed the requirement for the publication.
Maybe that can be incorporated since that's brought up into this public hearing for the author.
It was, it was repealed. And so it's not, you know, it's just, I, I'm not trying to make money for the newspapers and have everybody have to publish. But I mean, 1,500 of them published annually. I mean, that's quite a bit of money. But the thing is, is that I, I don't know what the argument was when you guys repealed it, but you guys did repeal it. It was the 37th. I just can't remember which public cloud it was. But anyway, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of NPOs and NGOs. And I think we just really need to, we need to, occasionally, when we see something, be able to, to audit the, to audit the, the NPO or the NGO. I mean, it, it's in the newspaper, so I'm not saying anything out of turn. I mean, there was that, that one group that, that paid to the members of the, the organization about $6 million rather than going to the Shriners. And so if there was a way, we would have loved to have
Well, it sounds to me like the, with my question on, on providing that information and to the OPA's office, it sounds like revenue tax does get that information. And it actually can probably get it from them instead of having the NGOs do it. Because then they go through what you call, you know, some of them being revoked. And it can also, that part you wouldn't know unless revenue tax provided that information. So maybe a mandate of revenue tax to make sure they provide this information to SAP. And especially those that are revoked and the explanation as to why.
They provided all of that to us. And it's going to be in the, in the audit that comes out next, in, in the coming weeks.
Is it through legislation that revenue tax is required to provide it to you?
Uh, no. It's, they, we got it through because we were doing a performance audit.
Yep, okay.
But yeah, we, we could post it. I, I just didn't want to put too many things in the bill.
Yep, okay. Well, maybe it, it might be a real important part, you know, just the reporting. So, and
Yeah, no, I, I'd have no objection to them filing it with us. And we would then, we could then, on our website, be another thing that they can, people can go to our website to find the, the financial statement of, of an, of an organization.
Public auditor, how does federal governments that provide grants to NGOs and nonprofit organizations, how do they at the end ensure that it's, it's been spent correctly? Do they provide a report to the federal government or whatever, let's say Department of Interior or something? So they have to provide a report at the end of its expenditure and provide it to, to them, right? To, to
Yes, or either that, or it's, or it's through, or depending on whether or not they are a direct recipient or if they were a, a sub-recipient of, of a grant. It all depends on, on what the agreement is and how the money is received. But they all, if it's, if it's over $750,000, then there should have been a report. And that when we do the entrance conference with, with all the agencies, one of the first questions that I asked by the auditor is, is how much money did you receive in federal grants? And, and is it going to be necessary that we do the, the, the single audit of, of the federal funds that you received?
Okay, thank you so much for that information. And look forward to making this legislation even better and stronger because it's obvious we, we need that. And knowing that it's been repealed, you know, the reporting required. So thank you, Madam, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to ask some questions regarding this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll recognize Senator Juan Rome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And certainly thank you to our public auditor for being here this afternoon to testify on this bill. I certainly understand your concern. I mean, when you actually look at the scope of the amount of non-government entities that the Governor Guam actually funds or subsidizes or provides funds for, it's quite a substantial list. And I think, you know, we are also concerned and in wanting to make sure that when public funds are used or given to an organization for a specific purpose, that those purposes are provided for and the money is accounted for. And I understand your concern as well, that you simply can't do every single one. But I'm hopeful, public auditor, that when these organizations start realizing that you're actually conducting these type of audits, it could be a random selection of determining which organization or which entities receiving the public money that you choose or, or decide to, or decide to, to review, that that will make the other organizations that much more conscientious in terms of how they spend their money. Because we're assuming a lot of these nonprofits should automatically be doing their, you know, their annual accounting of their funds, any of their funds that they have and how it's being spent. But of course, we have no guarantee of that. And we simply want to ensure that if it is public money, if it is coming from the taxpayers of Guam or money intended for our people, that it's spent for its intended purpose. Because historically, we really have not had an ability, sorry, I apologize for that. It's 3 o'clock, which is my warning sign here. We've had no ability in the past to verify any of that information. So is that how you would look in approaching it maybe? Or do you have an idea of any, you don't need to mention any names of organizations. But is there anything that would give you an idea that this might be a direction to go? Or might it be based on the amount of money? Is it over a certain amount? Or like I said, you just may do a random selection?
Yes, that, that's the way. As I said, I don't plan on doing all of them.
Sure.
But I just want to be able to, if, if, if somehow we get word that there's some, something interesting might, might be,
Yes.
then we should look at it. I don't want to have them say, well, we received our funds through the cancer treatment, I mean, cancer trust fund at UOG. We, we will respond to them and their auditors. We won't respond to you. I wanted to, to be able to say, no, it's explicit. I, my, this office has the authority to do it. And we can ask for, for it. I just wanted to make sure that in, in the event that we decided to go. Because some of them will, there was even a period where one of the, one of the charter schools initially had new counsel. And they were challenging the authority to, to, for our office to insist that they, they conduct an audit. I'm going, wait a minute, you're receiving millions of dollars. I mean, you can't possibly believe that I, that this office can't. And so I was able to talk them down. But they, they were challenging it at, at one point. And so I just wanted it specifically stated to, to make sure that there would be no challenge if I decided, if we decided that, that we would go out to some nonprofits. Because they would say, well, we, we weren't dealing with you. We got it through someone, another agency. We'll answer to them, but not to you. And yes, I think that this legislation will serve just initially as a deterrent, that people were like, maybe we better start making sure that we do have our financial statements. You know, like the, like the mayor's council. After we did their audit, I know now quarterly, every 19 reports come to me every three months because they're, they're filing their, their quarterly reports. But after we conducted an audit of, of their operations, but they're, they, they now, like clockwork, provide their reports to us. And so, thank you.
Well, thank you very much as well for your continued diligence and the work that you do in ensuring that our public resources are being properly spent. And certainly for the input you provided with regards to this bill that, that we've co-sponsored. Thank you very much, public auditor. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I'll recognize the main sponsor, Senator Frank Blos.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And we want to thank you very much for being here. And, you know, there is a discussion. I must admit that I think that in our initial discussions with regard to this, I think you and I both overlooked the ability to be able to ensure that there's funding for it. However, I appreciate that you made the statement that there could be times, you know, you'd be able to do this or as do, fund it through your office. Or we can make it as part of a, you know, the agent, the, the dispersing agency, recognizing that, you know, this money is coming from them. They also somehow factor into making sure that this, this audit gets performed. I must reiterate too, that I appreciate that. This is not, this is not a shall bill. This is a may bill.
Yeah.
And that the, the discretion and the ability to be able to do this basically falls on, on, you're sure to be able to determine that. There's nothing in that, I want, we want to put in statute that says that you shall conduct it because you would be overwhelmed. And I think that, you know, like you said, numerous nonprofit organizations that currently exist on Guam and those that were, had to be, had to fold as a result of noncompliance. That's in, that's in the past. We just want to make sure that the bills or the, the monies that we now provide to nonprofit organizations, it goes for the purposes of why they were receiving the money to begin with. Not to say that, you know, the misuse of it currently exists. I think, you know, as we move toward making sure that the accountability and transparency of government funds, the people's money, that, that there is the assurances and the protections that that money's being used properly. Like you said, I mean, I admit too, after, you know, when, when, when trying to deal with the threshold, and mind you, the threshold, that number is arbitrary. Thing we have, that was a starting point for a discussion. However, when you see that some, some of the nonprofit organizations and non-government organizations today, the amount of money they, they receive could actually fund whole agencies in its entirety and not have the same accountability and reporting requirements as these agencies. It almost like, okay, why don't we just change all the agencies to nonprofits? And none of them will be subject to this. Do you have any suggestions as a result of this conversation? Anything that may be included in this bill or, or language that need to be changed in the bill?
Well, no. I, when you guys discuss it, you guys can determine what the threshold's going to be. I just wanted you to know how much an audit costs. And though I'm not suggesting that every NGO and NPO that receives government funds set aside money to have an audit done, I, in fact, I don't want that. Because my, my thing about nonprofits and NGOs is that I really question them if more than 10% of the funds raised is spent on administration. And if an audit costs this much and the threshold is 200, you're practically at the threshold. I mean, you're, you're at the 10% just to do that. I just want them to keep their books and to make sure that they are complying with whatever their mission is. And so that if we come in and look, that, you know, it may not need to be a full-blown audit. Maybe I can just do a performance audit. But just to be able to look, to make sure, are they, are they fulfilling their mission and their vision? And are they spending it on, spending the money they receive to the intended beneficiaries and not benefiting the organizers and spending it all on administration and nothing on services? That's all I, I would like us to be able to do.
I appreciate that. And you're right. You know, I mean, I appreciate that. And you're right. You know, I mean, it, it may be, again, a $200,000 figure. It's not done by any, there was no science to it, as a matter of fact. It was basically based on some concerns, past concerns. You know, there, there have been numerous organizations that have obviously received less than $200,000. And it's almost common knowledge that none of that money that they received went towards why they asked for it to begin with. And it, it just, it gives, again, but then, that said, it's, you still have the discretion and the ability to be able to discern as to whether or not you want to be able to move forward and what type of audit activity you would, you would like that. I, I wanted to make sure that that flexibility was there.
No. And I appreciate that, because then if, if you ever hear of anything like that, we would be, we would like to receive that information. And maybe we can do a quick performance audit of it rather than just doing, getting a financial audit, just to make sure that.
Yeah. I just, I wanted to bring that up so that we can discern that, you know, there's, there's, there's not one standard audit, you know, that, that must be followed. There's, there's certain ways that can be seen as an audit, but, you know, an audit of a multimillion dollar organization is not the same audit you're going to perform on a nonprofit organization that received, you know, 50,000 but cumulative of 200,000. You know, so I wanted to make sure that, that was, that, that we brought that out in public, public record. That, first off, nonprofits, there is that $200,000 threshold. But however, I've worried, it was worried so that in the years that you have been receiving, you may have received $25,000 this and then $75,000 there, cumulatively, if you've received at least $200,000. Then you've met that threshold for the possibility. Everybody else, I hope there's some reporting requirement within the agency that disperses the funds, so that they can account for that money. At the end of the day, we just want to account for all the money that's being, all the people's money that's being spent elsewhere.
And I think it's a great idea to have the cumulative, because then it just gives us the ability to be able to go in for lower amounts.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, thank you, Senator Frank Blas. At this time, if there's nothing further from my colleagues, we'll go ahead and conclude today's hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, my colleagues. It is currently 3:44 PM. I, I conclude today's public hearing. We are adjourned. Happy Halloween. Since this was my saying, God bless. Thank you, auditor, speaker.